I'm going to call, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And before we begin our brief council meeting, I would like to ask the town manager to review the protocols for the meeting, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As you may or may not have heard, this meeting is being recorded, so it will be uploaded and posted on the town's website and YouTube channel. If at any point in either the council meeting or the work session, any non-council participants or observers wish to make comments. Typically during the council work sessions, we don't allow for public comments, but you're more than welcome to send a message via the chat function to me. So you can feel free to do so. And if for whatever reason this meeting gets interrupted in a way that does not allow us to continue productively, we'll, we'll end the meeting and distribute a new login so that we can continue uninterrupted. And with that, also, if anybody, as you log in, I'll, I'll just make, make sure that we have names for the record. So if you would please just be mindful of that and responsive to me so that I can correctly answer, enter that, that would be great. And that I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We, we also ask everyone, particularly during the work session, to please turn off their videos. And it, it might be possible during the council meeting that there will be public participation, depends on the council. Whatever the council decides. So with that, I will announce the first item, which is an item that was tabled from the earlier meeting this month. Public hearing motion to amend the FY 23 budget by adding $31,000 to the town pool renovation to a total of $285,000 for pool deck repairs to take place in fall 2022. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, as, as the mayor stated, this was on the agenda at the earlier council meeting this month. And the council had requested that the budget committee convene to discuss various options. And when I met with the budget committee, they unanimously agreed that the easiest and simplest solution would be to move ahead with the work and just use whatever extra money we needed to complete it from the capital contingency fund, which would not actually require a budget transfer or budget amendment. So the capital contingency fund, just as a reminder, we, we build that into the budget every year for unanticipated costs related to capital projects. So it's, it, it's really designed exactly for this, this kind of project. So that's, that's what the budget committee has recommended. And I will, I second that recommendation from, from the.
So that, so, so what you're saying is that no amendments necessary?
That's right. Yeah, the, the council, the council doesn't have to vote on a budget transfer, but they, they can give their assent to, to allowing that administrative.
Well, no, you, you have the power to do this.
Right. It, it, it doesn't need a vote by the council. We've already, council's already voted on the budget that provides you the authority.
Okay, council president Serko, do you have any questions?
All right, no questions. Thank you for clarifying the situation, Matt, and please proceed.
Thank you, Councilor Baur. Do you have any questions?
It seems like a good solution.
Is council member Heller here?
Yep.
Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
You're muted, Debbie.
Sorry, no questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Brofak.
You're muted.
Can you guys not hear me?
Now we can.
Oh.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak on this issue?
Uh, nope.
Okay, thank you, council. Are you prepared to make a motion?
Um, I don't think we need to make a motion, do we?
Well, it's on the agenda. So you have to, you, you have to make a motion to turn down this amendment.
All right, I'll make a motion to concur with the budget committee recommendation that no amendment to the budget is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I see Heller. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed, thank you. And I, I think the process worked because the council had the wise advice of the budget committee on this item. And now I will turn it over to the distinguished council president for the work session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a number of topics. Welcome, everyone. Happy June. And just as a reminder, we're really discussing, this is not, we first discuss the topics. And as appropriate, to decide if the topic warrants being included in the July council meeting. The first work session topic is a recommendation from the pool committee to have a policy resolution requiring the town manager collect a proposal to extend the pool season prior to budget preparation. The essence of this, and the town manager can provide some more details, is just that when Matt makes his annual solicitation to pool companies for their bids, he would include in the solicitation extended pool seasons so that the council would receive that additional, would, would sort of automatically receive additional cost information. But it, it doesn't, it would not, in and of itself, this does not extend the pool season. Matt, do you have any additional information or did I capture that correctly?
No, I, I think that that's, that's the gist of it. The, the, I, the only thing I'll add is just a reminder that the council had previously considered a recommendation from the committee in a similar vein that was to make the pool season May 15th to September 15th. And, and this is sort of maybe one step removed from that where they say the, the, the season isn't changed, but that prior to the budget creation, the council will at least, by policy, receive a quote to extend it to those dates.
And is it, how much of an issue is it for you as the town manager to collect this additional information?
I, I, as a matter of practice, we've, we've done it the past couple of years anyway. So, um, it's, there's, there's really, there's multiple ways that we, we could accomplish that. One way you were referencing is, you know, we could include that when we put out an RFP to say, what's, what's your, what's the price every season? And then what's the price to extend it? We could just do it as we go, like we've been doing. And that's, that's basically what they're asking here is that we, we continue to do it as a matter of policy every year as we go. And, and the, you know, and the other is to, to continue to ask the committee to submit a request if, if that's their recommendation every year.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Let's just go around the virtual room. Debbie, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, um, I guess I really didn't understand that it to be that, Matt. I really understood it to be that they, the pool, they, they want us to make as a matter of policy that the pool is open from March, from, from May 15th to September 15th. And all, something we're just saying is we'll get a price for it, but we're not necessarily going to do it. And we're not necessarily going to put it in our budget. Is that what you're saying?
So, y- yes. So if you, if you remember, the committee did request that we, by policy, extend the pool season. And the council at that time decided, no, we'd really rather consider it on a year by year basis, especially as we enter into some uncertainty in future budget years. So my, my understanding, and granted, I wasn't at the last pool committee meeting. So I, I, I could be wrong, but in, in discussions with the pool committee chair, my understanding was, yes, in essence, the pool committee is, is going to recommend that we extend the, the pool season every year, I, I think, as a, as a matter of course. This was sort of preempting that and saying, why don't we just every year at least get a proposal to extend it? And the count, the council will have that proposal for, as the budget's created every year.
I just, um, I don't know why we just don't continue doing what we've always been doing. You know, if we have, if we, if we can, the council can afford, the town can afford it, and it makes sense, we should open the pool earlier, keep it open later, or do one or the other. You know, um, but we have a policy or we don't have a policy. And that's why I'm not so sure what this, what this is really saying. Because to me, it said that we will keep the pool open from mid-May to mid-September. But maybe I didn't under, I didn't understand it. I don't know.
Well.
When is the pool?
Maybe I could have a go. What it is, is basically we're getting two quotes. It's like, you know, you're, you're getting two quotes for work in your house. And one of them is more expensive than the other. And you've got to decide whether the extra that you get with that is worth it. Same thing, we're getting two quotes from the pool company. One is a longer pool season, one is a shorter pool season. We've got to decide whether we can afford the longer pool season. That's what it comes down to.
When is the pool scheduled to close this year?
Labor Day is.
Isn't it September 15th now? Didn't we extend it?
We, we, not this year. We, we only extended it on, on the front end this year. We, we didn't extend it on the back end, in part because we were, I think, as council president said, we were not sure on the scheduling of the pool deck work in the fall.
Oh, because that could start in September, early September.
That probably will start in September. I think they need to start it in September.
Okay. I mean, I'm in favor of not talking about when the pool season runs every meeting. So whatever we have to do to, you know, get that, that would be good for me.
Sorry, Kabir, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay. So I've sort of heard a couple of, of comments here. One is that this is, this is already our policy to gather this information and have it available during budget deliberations. And the other is that we don't want to deliberate this all the time, every year. But I think that's, that's a separate question here. What we have is a recommendation from the pool committee to make this part of our policy, but it's already part of our policy. So I think that is the, if the council is in agreement, we can just decide not to bring this forward to the, to our next meeting. And we can just ask Matt and our liaison to the pool committee to explain that we consider this our policy already. We gather this information. So I, I, I think, as thinking it through, as we're, we're talking about it, that'd be my preference. I, whatever we can do to shorten a council meeting, the better. I, I'm not sure there's any value added here by this resolution, this proposal. Do you have any further comments or questions? Okay, then we'll, we'll just proceed with communicating back to the pool committee. And, and they may clarify or modify their recommendation. And we have plenty of time to, to address that at another work session. Okay, thank you. So moving on. Entered a contract with Elizabeth Harris for the maintenance of an apiary in the town park between Wisconsin Little Falls, as recommended by the environment committee. Matt, do you have some details here?
Yeah, so, um, the pool, or excuse me, the environment committee held a forum on, on this issue of the apiaries. And had, has requested residents who are in favor to reach out to the town hall. So the environment committee is asking again that the council consider this, this item to approve entering into a contract with the beekeeper that they have solicited using the same framework that had been agreed to last year with the other beekeeper that we had begun to engage in. I think the only outstanding question would be insurance and how, how we handle that. If the town is going to reimburse for insurance, if the town is going to do the legwork of.
I, I, I think you're, I think you're going to ask the, the vendor if she wanted the town to pay for it.
She, she has said that she's looking into insurance, but that at the moment she agreed to the contract that was offered previously, which was that the town would pay for the insurance.
So then, then that's how it has to be placed on the agenda? If that's what she agreed, if that's what she agreed, if that's the MOU that she agreed to, then, then that, that's what has to be on the agenda. If the, if, if the councils, remember, the purpose tonight is to decide whether you're going to move this forward. So I, I personally think it's time to move this forward with the town paying for the insurance and see what happens. And I hope everybody will approve it.
How much does the insurance cost?
Unfortunately, I, I don't know that information because I had trouble.
It, it's not, it, it's not, it, he, Matt had the information last year and I, I don't.
I mean, it's like $500, $5,000.
It's not, it's, it's, it's less than you would think. I, I, I recall, but it's not.
It's, it's also the beekeeper gets the insurance. We would reimburse her rather than the town gets the insurance.
So that again.
I know, I don't, I know, I don't think that's the way. I, I think that, that, remember, there is a very long process with the last beekeeper. And the, our insurer will ensure that, and it's not prohibitive, but you'll be able to.
My, my memory was legit, wouldn't actually, that is, they, they didn't have a policy for it. Isn't that right, Matt?
Well, yes. I mean, Legit, Legit basically said that because our, our policy only covers agents of the town. And I, I think that they felt that this was an activity outside of what they would cover for the town, which is why we, why if, if somebody were to sue the town of Somerset, they, they may, they would cover us. But if they were to sue the beekeeper, our insurance would not cover.
But this is a, this is a town activity. I suggest that we move forward, that the council agendas this. And all these are excellent questions that will get answered. And then you can make your final decision on July 5th.
Right.
Yeah, the forum was actually a very interesting forum. And I, I was the only council member on it, which, but I'd encourage the other council members to look at the recording of the forum. And so you can get up to speed that way. It, it is interesting. So it's not, it's, it's not a hard assignment to, to look at it. And there were some real experts in the forum. Matt, have you followed the procurement policy here?
This does fall within the procurement policy because it wouldn't, it, it doesn't meet the threshold, the dollar threshold that is necessary to, to kick in.
So it's below, and was it 10K, 15K?
Yeah, 15,000. And I think to Shan, to Shannon's question, as, as I recall, it, it would be maybe several hundred dollars, some, something like that to, to cover.
Well, Councilmember Kumar is making an excellent point. And this is the problem that I had a long time ago when the committee engaged this person without being aware of the procurement policy. But I decided based on how much work had been done and how many residents are interested that at this, and I think Matt pointed this out before, that basically that the procurement policy was not used. And I, and I have a problem with that. But I think given how much support there is for this, that we at least try it. And I, and I regret that the procurement, the new policy was not applied. But that was an error made by the committee.
Matt, can you send us the link to the environment committee meeting? So, you know, Robin was the only one who was there, but I would, I would, I would like to watch it.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I'll, I'll, I'll distribute that after, after the meeting tonight.
A lot of questions that will probably be answered if I watch.
And I do think that, that, Mr. Manager, you, Mr. Town Manager, you should re-publicize that meeting in this Friday, in this Friday's announcement so that residents that didn't watch it could watch it. So that there, there will be public support for it. And, and another, and something else is to make sure that all of the abutting residents have been affirmed. I think this is also something that Councilmember Kumar had requested, that all the abutting residences be proactively notified of this.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it would be, when we last discussed this, we said we would get into a process. You know, and I think this, the forum that was held was in part to kind of gauge fresh interest in this. So I think we would need some sense of what is the level of interest in town. And then I think right now it's fuzzy in my mind. Is it just the environmental committee? Is it two, three residents? I think I saw two emails that came through to the council, but I, I have a feeling there is more interest. So it'd be good to get a clear sense of that. And then I think there's a set of implementation questions. So one of them being informing residents that this might be happening, those who are proximate to the location identified. As part of that, I understand the pool committee passed a resolution that showed up in the minutes that just circulated 24 hours ago, raising questions about that. So.
It's because they, they didn't want the apiary placed near the pool. And that's what they said in the minutes. And it, it, I don't think it is, is being.
Because they say they don't want it in Vinson Park.
Near the pool is what they said, in Vinson Park, near the pool.
So Matt, I may want to clarify, as part of sort of our residents who are most immediately impacted for it. And then this question of, you know, if it's below the procurement threshold, if I remember the procurement policy, you have discretion then, Matt. Spend the money. I don't believe it comes in front of a council. So I'd like some clarity on that. Under what conditions and for what purposes would something that is below the procurement threshold by quite a significant amount would come in front of a council? I think it'd be good to understand why, given we have the policy in place and this is.
But this, but, but, Councilor Kumar, this isn't an activity that's in the budget.
So it's a, it's a budget amendment? But again, it's, it's what, $200, $300?
Well, the, the first thing is that it's approving a new activity of the town. So, so the dollar amount really is irrelevant. It's, it's, it's a project that, that the, the, the mayor and the town manager can't create this project. It has to be approved by the town.
Okay, in, independent of the, the costs involved. Like, then we, we would probably, I suspect others would want to understand what really is the level of interest. I don't have a beat on that.
I mean, that, that is a good point though, Matt. Where, where in the, in the budget would the funds come from to pay for this?
Um, I would have to take a quicker look off the top of my head. I, I, I don't necessarily know.
And then the last point is, I know Elizabeth well. We overlapped in India. I'm quite confident she's not a full-time beekeeper. And so it'd be good to understand really, you know, what, what commitment she has to this. You know, I know she's also a freelance writer and has a number of other projects. And so I would, this is kind of, it dovetails with the procurement policy question. I, every time we come up with this issue, I feel we're kind of taking the best, next best person we encounter and sort of running a systematic process to find the right person to run what could be, while a low cost, but quite visible function and service in town. So, you know, while I love Elizabeth, she's an amazing person. I know, I'm pretty confident she's not a full-time beekeeper.
Have you, have you read the environment committee note on this? In it, she says she is going to be coming to the, the highs three times a week. Is, do you want more than that is the question?
No, it claims that report claims she's a full-time beekeeper. I just read it before the meeting. And so for my personal experience with her, I'm pretty confident she's not.
She, she would be, if you move this forward to the meeting, as you know, we requested vendors attend. And these are all good questions that need to be asked of her in a public meeting.
It would make me mildly nervous that we are going with someone, how wonderful, by the way, she's amazing, that she's not a full-time beekeeper and that she would become, because we're going ahead with her. I, that logic I struggle with. I, I would rather we go with a full-time beekeeper who's out there professionally doing this. This was my request last time. We follow a process. We do it systematically. It still kind of feels a little seat of a pants kind of thing, you know? So we did the forum and, you know, quickly turned around, everyone loves Elizabeth. Let's go with Elizabeth, you know? But okay, Elizabeth is great, but is this the right person? And can we, you know, find the right person? And so I just.
To your point, you know, it was going with the right person the last go around, and then that didn't work out. So what's to say that this one is going to be any different?
Any easier, given she's even less of a professional beekeeper. So I think we need maybe one more cycle of homework.
The, the last person was a nurse and not a professional bee, bee, beekeeper, in fact.
Okay, well, there you go. So I think we need one more cycle of homework is what I'm feeling. At least I, I don't feel equipped to make a positive call on the council at the next meeting.
Kabir, what, what additional questions do you have? I mean, maybe we can forward them to her. Um, what what additional questions do you have? I mean, maybe we can forward them to her. Or to the environment. For to the environment, right?
I think we would need, I think it's on Matt, actually, since they have made the recommendation. So Matt, my question to you is, why her versus anyone else? Um, what is the cost burden exactly? Um, and then, you you know, what, and before that, sort of what is the level of interest in town? Can we have some dimensionality around that? So I don't have a beat on that. I'm not in the community, part of the community that is talking this up, so I don't have a sense of that. So it would be good to get a clear read on that. And then if we are going to move forward and you come with that sort of expectation, then have you spoken to the residents? Near that location, have you kind of conferred with the pool committee on what they were getting at exactly, you know? We we have all those pieces ironed out.
You know, I I worry about something else, you know, if I can add on to this. I'm not so sure there's such wide support for this in the town, maybe on the environment committee. It'd be nice to try to figure that out. In some of my conversations with people, they're afraid of the bees. You know, people are afraid of them and um, I I just um, you know, so I I'm a little worried about that. So it'll be interesting to get to hear what the people around, you know, the houses closest to the, you know, um, where the bees will be, you know, what they say. That might, you know, if they're all positive, then maybe it's okay, because, you know, they're the guys that are really affected by it.
Yeah, I I also encourage you to um, look to watch the forum because the issue of people being afraid of bees did come up in that, in fact. So, but yeah, I I mean, I absolutely contact the homes that are near the proposed apiary site. They're actually, they're, none of them are very near it. Matt thinks it's the nearest, but yes, so it's the closest.
It'd be, it would be great also to pump this 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 video to our residents, you know, in Friday's thing to say, hey, we really strongly suggest. That you watch this and let us know what you, you know, if you have concerns.
Well, and like, can something go out where like the residents that live around it sign something or, you know? I mean, because I don't think that we're ready to turn this around for next month's council session. It doesn't sound like, because, I mean, if they haven't even been contacted yet, we're heading into the Fourth of July, I mean, people are busy. And, you know, it becomes like a replay of pickleball and all of the things where we haven't notified any of the neighbors. And then we discuss it for an hour and then say we haven't notified anyone, so we'll table it, so.
Pre- previously, in fact, Matt Fink, who was the nearest neighbor, um, and he, I mean, he's still across the stream and his backyard. Exit is still some distance away from the apiary, was contacted, he had no concerns about it and did say that. Um, other neighbors have not been contacted, but no other neighbors actually are within sight of the apiary. I mean, there are houses that aren't that far away, but.
Except remember, that discussion happened before pickleball. And there are a lot of the neighbors to pickleball were extremely upset that they were not affirmatively advised. And so that's why I've been saying that before this moves forward, we need to make sure that all of the abutting neighbors. Have been proactively advised, so they will know to come in, and I don't I don't know that that's been done.
That's fair.
By the way, Debbie, last year, before joining the council, I had done a survey. And one of the questions I'd asked was sort of ranking services in town, like what do residents value? I think maybe forty, forty-five people responded to that survey, or households responded to that survey. A number of people in the comment section said, I like a town where we're doing interesting funky things like an apiary. But I wouldn't want this at the cost of core services. I wouldn't want this at the cost of, you know, like not having the money for repairs for the pool or for the roads or. I don't think people had a sense of what it costs, but they were making that juxtaposition. So just wanted to remind everyone that I suspect we are a town that would welcome an apiary. But as long as there's confidence that other services are being delivered, uh, as per expectations.
Yeah, I mean, one other question to ask Elizabeth Harris is. Is she getting insurance for herself? In other words, because that gets to whether we actually have any expense at all for this.
I I want to remind you that don't cut corners on this. Having a part-time beekeeper who self-insures herself. To deliver a town service seems like a rickety structure to me. You know, I just want to make sure that we, just in the interest of getting it done, don't get it done in a way that's not sustaining.
Right. I appreciate your comments, Kabir, and and everyone's comments in this discussion. I think that that there are some homework to be done. It might be possible to get the answers and make the contacts with folks prior to the July meeting. I leave that to the town manager to uh to discuss with the environment committee and and reach out to neighbors. And if we're success, if the town manager is successful in the environment committee, then we can consider this in July. But otherwise, I think some of you made some good points, but um, we need to make sure we have. Proper open engagement with the community, especially residents that are near the site, proposed site of the apiary. And we need to be able to consider that as we we vote on this. And if it takes an extra month to do that, that's fine. Everyone's working hard. Uh, holding the forum was a great step. And I look forward to watching it myself. Does that sound like a reasonable path forward to folks?
Sure.
Yeah, I can, I'll I'll um. Let's see, so. Yeah, I'll I'll try to give you a sense, you know, uh, next week of where we stand and if. Um, we have, we have sort of enough information to to move forward on the fifth.
And we might not, and that's okay if we don't.
Okay.
Because I, one of the things that Kabir said that I agree with wholeheartedly is. This activity, like, like all of our activities, need to be thought through and properly executed. And if it takes a little bit of extra time, it takes a little bit of extra time. Okay, thanks all. Next item. Speaking of quirky or interesting activities, Kabir, to organize a wine cork collection site at the town hall. Uh, in partnership with record to recycle reuse wine corks as recommended by the environment committee. Uh, Matt, can you give a little bit of background?
Yeah, a resident reached out to me maybe a month ago or so about this program. Actually, very similar to what we're doing with with the tennis balls and and reusing the rubber from the tennis balls. Um, about wine corks, where you can collect wine corks and then you do a free pickup with this company that. Uses the recycled wine corks and turns them into things like soles for shoes and and things like that. And so basically, what what this recommendation or request is, is to set up a a wine cork collection site at the town hall. That can then be um, shared with this company to reuse as as they please. Uh, Recork is the company, they're they're a nonprofit that's based out of California. So I think we would just use, I I don't know exactly what what the uh. Repository we would use is, but some some type of box or barrel or something that people could just come and drop off their wine corks at the town hall.
Is this an E C recommendation?
Yes, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. They they came to me initially and I said, it sounds like a neat idea. Um, I'm sure the environment committee would be interested in in hearing about it. And I believe they they did a little presentation at at the last environment committee meeting. And so coming out of that, the environment committee recommended that that we go ahead and move forward with it.
I have a couple of questions about it. Um, is um, when you, is this this person, who who is it again? I'm sorry, I'm just, I don't see her name here. Um, is this, this just sounds like it's her business, that she's doing this as a professional thing. You know, um, and why isn't she just collecting the corks at her house, like put a bin out in front of her house? That's one. Number two is, will these corks smell? So it's going to attract, you know, rodents maybe or foxes or whatever else roams our streets. We have seen a lot of things roam our streets. Um, so is there any kind of problem with that? Third question is. What, in terms of ministering this, Matt, is that something you're going to end up dealing with in any way? I'd hate to see one more thing, you know, going on that's that that might get in your way. So those are my questions.
I can possibly answer some of them at least, um. Uh, as I understand, this resident has a business that has entered into some partnership with this Recork. Um, business, so they're they're connected to it, um, kind of one one step removed. Um. And that's how they, that's how they heard about it. That's how they knew about it. And I think that was part of the impetus of them um, reaching out to us. I I think that they thought the town hall would be a good spot, uh, in part just because it's a, it's a. A neutral kind of central, it's not really centrally located in town, but it's a, it's a gathering place of sorts in town. Um, I don't know if they do collections at their own house or not. Um, and in terms of smells and attracting pests, I don't know the answer to that question. So that that would be a good follow-up question.
She earn any money at this? Because if this is a business, we should not be doing it. We should not be taking part in it. Everybody will have a business somewhere along the line. There's lots of interests out there, and this sounds like a good idea. I'm not putting it down. I would put my wine corks in there. But um, you know, I just concerned that it's a business that she's earning money on and and we don't belong in it, so.
I tend to agree with Debbie that we wouldn't want to add yet another thing to your list, because there will be stuff around it.
I I agree.
Yeah, and I.
I think we have to streamline and like really like look at overarching town goals and, you know, strategies that will achieve those goals. And I don't know that one-off wine court collecting is going to achieve, you know, the environmental friendly goal.
Well, let me speak from a different perspective, maybe.
I endorsement of alcoholism in in it and, you know, uh, which I think would be of concern to some residents. One quick.
Right. Yeah, right. I, you know, I, in one of my other hats, I'm serve on the county's called Waste Advisory Committee and um. There's this concept of zero waste, trying to get rid of things. At the moment, we dispose of our corks while some people put them in the landfill trash, which is useless. Uh, I do compost my corks and eventually they do serve some purpose uh when they're composted. Some people put them in recycling and they probably get lost in recycling, probably go nowhere in recycling. Um, so this is in fact a much better way to dispose of corks than any of the methods that we currently have of disposing corks. So if it can be arranged, we are contributing to a zero waste goal and we are putting corks back into circulation in other form, which is an excellent thing. And that's very positive. Um, I I am also concerned about the work that Matt has. Uh, there should be no additional work for Matt. Um, the individual, the resident should basically maintain. The cork collection at the town hall so that empty it when appropriate, should probably supply the bin, it should be a covered bin too. Um, and so I think, in other words, as a town, we should recognize the value of going to zero waste. And as a town, we should recognize that this is part of going to zero waste, this recycling circulating support and reach out to try to help in that. Um, but we should absolutely minimize the work for Matt, yes. I agree there.
Well, Matt has already put work in by preparing materials for today's meeting. So I just feel that this this seems out of. Or activity, sounds like there is a way to deal with corks, which is composting, you just described it. And we offer that service, if I'm not mistaken.
We do, for, uh, as I said, it it it's of some value, definitely this way of handling it is of more value.
Here's what I have, we facilitated the shredding event. Why not encourage residents, invite Recork to the shredding event and encourage residents to bring their corks? I think the fundamental question here is whether the town hall should be a collection site for something like this. I think, I think that is really at the heart of this, and I think that's why Debbie was also observing the smell and. Just sort of stuff around that and, but residents can, you know, keep corks sorted at home and bring them to the shred event once a year.
But we could, we could go back to the environment committee and say, we made that suggestion and see what they think of it. Um, and for those people who drink a lot of wine once a year may not be enough, but then hey, how many people.
I am mildly concerned, not that I don't drink wine, but that we should be associated with anything that. Sort of implied encourages alcoholism. I think that would be probably of concern to some sort of residents.
And I think we can support her putting a box on her front porch, you know, and and she's probably more centrally located than the town hall. Um, and uh, you know, and say, wow, it's a great, great project, but. How many great projects are we going to be behind? Especially, this is a business that she makes money off of. You know, maybe she doesn't, but I I I just think it puts us in a funny place.
Well, would would you object to Kabir's suggestion that that it be collected at the annual shredding event? They be collected at the annual shredding event?
No, that'd be, that's fine. No, I'd be good with that.
Also, I mean, you could, the, there's no annual shredding event. It has to be approved each year. And there, there's some issues about that event related to what Debbie's talking, Councilmember Heller is talking about.
I just don't like the idea of corks in the front porch of the town hall. You know, it's it's, it's like I I envisioned that we're going to have baskets out there as time goes on with all sorts of things. I just, I think it's unsamely.
To the extent that the shredding event happens, it's one of those environmental committee events. If it happens, you look at it every year, this could be a very sensible add-on to it. And again, we are offering composting, so that's important.
She could collect it at the race every year at the school.
Maybe they should have an environmental day each year and we can bring in all sorts of different things and do it all in a day.
We could do it a nurse day, I suppose, but um. I mean, I I think doing it with the shredding event, when the shredding event is approved. Um, and it doesn't have to be a shredding event, it could also just be a a nurse day event. Once a year is, I think, an idea that we can go back to the environment committee with.
Well, we, remember when Councilmember Dudley Fox was on the council, we had an Earth Day event every year. And maybe that, maybe we should, that's something that should be considered for the for the next fiscal year. Maybe we could ask the environment committee to um. Make a proposal and all these ideas can be, and it would also be wonderful, as you know, if we involve young people. Because I know that I've attended events at Somerset Elementary School over the years. They dealt with environmental projects and and oftentimes in our households, it is the young people that are. That are avant-garde about this.
Yeah. All right, well, I'll I'll, I feel like I'll take our our suggestions back to the environment committee and the concern over the company too. But Debbie, I'll I'll reflect that and say, maybe it's better to an Earth Day event and if I, um, or and see what they say.
Great, thank you. Uh, I thought that was a very positive discussion all around with some good ideas. And take what the next item is, weed whackers. I don't know, uh, Matt, if you want to just summarize the proposal or it's it's in there in our read ahead?
Yeah, 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 just very briefly, um, this September is when the leaf blower. Uh, the gas-powered leaf blower ban goes into effect and the environment committee uh. Has made a. has made a recommendation, in essence, that the same law would be extended to apply to weed whackers and, um, Ron's not here with us, but I think one of, one of the things that he had pointed out in the discussion on the leaf blower legislation was the, uh, that because of jurisdiction questions, although there's, there's obviously an environmental benefit to this in terms of, uh, reduction of greenhouse gases, um, that these laws need to be passed under the auspices of, um, noise reduction and, and noise pollution. And so, um, I think the environment committee's proposal does, does reflect that.
Thank you, Matt. Um, I thought the proposal does and, and doesn't do that. It's sort of, it's hand waving about the noise associated with weed whackers. But if you look at the references, the references are more generic about gas-powered equipment or gas-powered leaf blowers. And I'm also, so I'm just, just sharing my, my thoughts here and then we can go around folks. I, I note that we're, our ban on gas-powered leaf blowers will go into effect September 1 of this year. I would think it would be appropriate to get some lessons learned from that implementation before the council considered expanding, expanding that legislation.
Respect to is that it's worth, while being aggressive on these, on these interventions, I think the rationale is very clear cut. You know, we know what the evidence is. We know that they are pollutants. We just, I know we cannot make it, make the case based on that. But we get the, the, you know, so the question really is like it was with the gas-powered leaf blowers is that is it going to have an impact on small-scale landscapers and, you know, services that the town residents use? If we could draw some lessons from that, from the gas-powered leaf blowers experience, it will be useful. You know, uh, but beyond that, I think the underlying logic of doing these kinds of interventions is very well established. The more aggressive we can be, the here speedy, sensible intervention makes sense to me given the overwhelming evidence that exists all over the country. The only question is, how does it impact the services our residents use? And, and I'm surely, given the gas-powered, uh, uh, you know, implementation, we have some insight on that. So that we do it properly this time and not unnerve residents or make them anxious that their service providers will be somehow negatively impacted.
Thanks for the comments, Kabir. Can we just go around? Uh, Shannon, do you have any thoughts or questions?
Are gas-powered lawn mowers allowed?
At the moment, yep.
And so we just, it's only gas-powered leaf blowers that has been banned as of September 1.
Yes.
When are people talking about gas-powered lawn mowers?
Uh, maybe that'll be for twenty twenty-four, but the, the problem with the, the gas-powered lawn mowers is that the electric motors, don't do, uh, don't last a full day. When you're cutting multiple lawns going around the, um, properties that you, you, you landscape for. And so you've got to recharge them and recharging slow. So the, the solution yet is not yet there to, um, switch to, to ban gas-powered lawn mowers. So I would really desire them to be banned. I did see, um, one company at the MML conference who say they've got a lawn tractor that will do fourteen acres, which is a big improvement and that might be a full day's worth. Uh, so it's coming, you know, it's coming, but we're not there yet. For weed whackers, the gas-powered weed whackers are already disappearing. Um, because in fact, the, um, electric weed whackers are cheaper and more efficient. And they don't have to run for anything like as long as a, a gas powered mower. So the, the amount of charge you need for them therefore is a lot less. So they are really disappearing already in this, which has been giving them an extra shove out the door.
But I appreciate Shannon's question. Like if, if we know, we have a line of sight to the things we, we weren't done, could we just lay it all out? You know, and put a timeline and
We, we, we could, that's what the state of California did in fact, but, but, um, the, the, I would like to see more evidence that there are more machines available and, and more, that will last a full day before we, um, moved to ban, uh, gas-powered mowers. I think it's coming in the next year or two. I think I saw the first one at the MML meeting, but I'd like to see more that can do that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with Steve Circo, which is like, you know, I, I think that the gas leaf blowers are, you know, the incredibly high, heavy lifting pollutants and, you know, I don't know. I mean, weed whacker, like, I'm, I'm pretty neutral. Like, maybe we should just see, you know, how the gas-powered one goes first and then kind of go from there. This is my opinion.
I agree with that. I don't think we have enough information to take the next step yet. So I think we should sit back on it.
And it's good to let this like digest with the, you know, with the, with the landscaping companies too.
I mean, it, it, I'm, I'm not all that worried about them because as I said, I think they are, they are already disappearing for economic reasons for the landscaping companies, but, um, yeah, we can tell them, you know, that, that we want to wait to see how the leaf floor bland goes, ban goes down and can we learn any lessons from that that would apply to weed whackers in the future? And I think that's a good answer.
Very small, uh, number of landscapers that are using gas-powered weed whackers.
Yeah, it's, it's just that they're disappearing. They are
It is, they have effectively self banned for obvious reasons.
Okay, um, the other question is timeline. And, and I like the suggestion, I think it was from you Kabir, that maybe we could have a, a vision, maybe the environment committee could articulate a vision of getting to a clean landscaping protocol or, or what, you know, for the town and, and what, what and when. In terms of this particular proposal and the timeline, my, I'm guessing that the environment committee is bringing it forward now because they want to give more than a year's notice to landscapers. But I think this, as, as some folks have noted, this is a, a smaller item than gas-powered leaf blowers. So I think I could consider, I could conceive the council passing legislation, say in December of this year, that gas-powered weed whackers would be banned starting in September of next year. I don't think we have to give it a full year. But I, I think there's value in getting some lessons learned from the first big step we're taking on September 1 of this year. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Well, just comment, the gas-powered leaf blowers are already disappearing. If you wander around the neighborhood, you'll see more and more of the battery-powered ones in use. And that's partly because the county has been giving away, um, battery-powered blowers when you exchange for gas-powered blowers. That program has been running in the county. So
I think that while people don't need a year's advance notice, I think there's a perception issue around that. And so I, I would, if, if, if you're telling the choices, let's wait till December, but it's a shorter notice period. Versus now, it's a longer, I'd rather do now and give a longer notice period. Interesting. I, I, I don't, I was saying that, I was making a very small point on evidence, which is that there's a subset of service providers who are small-scale service providers. And I remember with the gas-powered leaf blowers, there was concern that those service providers wouldn't, would struggle with, with this ban. So did they struggle? How did they make the transition? Because those same service providers are most likely the last ones to switch to this. So it'd be good to just have that color before we make a call. But beyond that, I think, you know, the little longer lead time is always a good thing.
Okay. Thank you, Kabir. Great discussion. Any other questions, comments? Okay. This, this next one is an item I've been looking forward to. Shannon, uh, raised it to my attention, discussion on street signage, tree trimming, code enforcement. Uh, public safety officer, staff position, sort of all rolled together. Matt, do you want to, or, or Shannon, do you want to give a little bit of?
Sure. Sure. Well, so you know, the newly, um, restructured, I guess I would say, um, public safety committee led by Kumar, you know, has brought forward, like we're, we're really working on, or he's really working on getting a set of subcommittees and really following up with some of these things that have been sitting out there for a while. And so I think that there's just a lot of questions in terms of, um, you know, as a town, how do we kind of get these things going and moving forward? You know, I know Enrique used to kind of patrol the streets when, after storms and look for down trees and stuff like that. And I, you know, we did not know kind of where that stands as like a town and how we're going to be implementing. You know, those kind of things like, for example, I mean, you know, Matt, you know, but there's a sign missing on Fallstone and Uppingham. And it's a street sign. It's been missing for, I think, four months at least. And like, so if you're turning, if you don't know where Uppingham is, you have no idea that this is the street that you turn on. And that's a really big public safety issue because, um, the ambulance services and stuff, they don't use, wha- whatever map, wha- whatever I'm talking about, but they go off of like kind of street coordinates. And, um, and so, you know, we've got to get, and then, you know, there was the issue where the sidewalk was cracked and someone's mom fell. And, you know, there's been a handful of sidewalk issues, um, street signs being down, things like that. Like, how do we kind of organize this together and have kind of a succinct moving forward plan with these kind of things? And also like the street lighting and when, you know, street lighting reports are down. And on top of that, you know, we're also working on, um, the police and, you know, how we set up the police for, um, next year. You know, do we ever, did we ever find, um, the document that kind of, uh, you know, decided like what the police were doing? You know, when, when this program was set up and how do we manage the police staffing better? And then also the last thing was really looking at the streetlights that are a part of the budget moving forward. And what's our town plan for the streetlights? Like, have we designated a committee to look into it, you know? Because there's a lot of committees that, you know, are kind of involved with this traffic, public safety, environment. You know, I don't know, a bunch of them. Um, but, you know, should we be designating a committee that would take the lead on that? You know, do we have the lighting consultants report, you know, kind of like what are the steps moving forward that we can all collectively be working on so we can move some of these items forward and get some of this stuff taken care of?
Right. Um, thank you for that, that summary, that background, Shannon. And I guess, Matt, if, if you can just sort of explain the status quo of how this is all part of the burden you're trying to juggle.
Yeah, um, so just generally on a few, a few of these items, um, we've been, um, we've essentially lost our code enforcement person. He's, he's, he just hasn't been available recently. And, um, I've been working to replace him and also in addition to code enforcement, add a sort of public safety and, public safety and surveillance element to it in the sense, uh, of, of some of the things that you were talking about, Shannon, in terms of, making sure signage isn't blocked, making, uh, with, or, or missing or is, uh, unreadable. Doing kind of regular checks on the pedestrian infrastructure, uh, and even some, the roadways, if there, if there's something, something bad. Doing regular checks on streetlights, which we had worked out previously. I've, I've been trying to make kind of semi-regular rides throughout town myself to, to try to pick up that slack. But to have a designated person who is observing these, these issues, reporting on them, um, so that we can then either report them to the right people to get them fixed or take the next step and order the right equipment or contact the right contractor to, to get that work done. And so a big part of that is filling, filling that gap in our, in our current staffing and contracting and getting somebody in place, um, to take on this role. I've been working with Steve a little bit offline, um, and, and Mayor Slaven as well, um, to try to define that role in a, in a, in a good way so that we are wrapping in a lot of these elements that you're talking about and not just continuing with a status quo that wasn't working and that obviously does and did have some gaps. So that's turned into a big priority for me. That was part of our thinking and rap, wrapping this all up. I've put together a job description for it. Um, and as I said, uh, Mayor Slaven and, and council president have both given me some feedback on some edits. And, um, I'm just finalizing that to be able to put, to, uh, put that job advertisement out, out there. So we can get somebody, uh, lined up for that. In terms of the streetlights, um, I have been in contact with Pepco. And I actually talked to somebody at MML because, uh, some, some basic questions weren't, we weren't getting very clear answers previously. But in essence, we, we sort of have two, two options. And I, I think based on some of our previous conversations, the one option is not, I, I don't, I don't think it's the right way to go. And, and that is that we can either purchase the poles and the lights from Pepco. We take on all the responsibility of replacing streetlights ourselves, maintaining extras for ourselves, uh, reporting, putting up new lights, et cetera. The second is use the lights that Pepco has. Pepco has a selection of lights, including LED streetlights, to pay for an upgrade throughout town. And what I've, the, the, the step that I've moved forward with right now is to talk to Pepco. Pepco had been pushing back a little bit about town-wide altogether, all at once. And so instead, recognizing that all, all, you know, although our goal is town-wide, at least getting something in place. So starting with one street and then moving on from there. And making the right selection of LED lights, doing it one street at a time, one work order at a time that way. I know that this is a big priority heading into the new year. And so I, I've tried to, to ramp this up so that when the new budget season comes around, we're able to spend this money, you know, pretty quickly and get started with the project quickly. Because it will take time to get a contractor to do the replacements themselves and to do these work orders. And we, we want to spend the money that we have budgeted for it. There's also some gaps in, in our, uh, in, in our, uh, in our lighting plan throughout town. So we do, we do have, we do have a lighting consultant, um, that we've used in the past. I, I've maybe had this conversation offline with a couple of you before. I am personally a little bit skeptical of the lighting consultants, um, just because I, although I, I don't, I'm not denying they're bona fides and that they, they know what they're talking about. In my experience, it, they're, where they aren't as helpful as in actually taking the next step to, to get them done and put them in place. Um, and I think a lot of this is actually pretty Um, and I think a lot of this is actually pretty intuitive in terms of. What, if you drive down Surrey Street, you can tell there's gaps in the lighting on Surrey Street. And we just need to put up an extra pole in between where there's gaps. And so. That will be part of what we also talked to Pepco about is. Basically, we, we, we do have a map right now of all of our lights in town. And so I'm going to have to go. Either all at once or one by one to give them the, the list of the lights, the type of the lights that we want. And then they're going to go out to, at, at any location of new poles.
Right, you see, excuse me, Matt? I just want to cut out, I think we're, we're getting off topic a bit, although I, I know Shannon was asking about the lights.
I'm sorry.
That is a, no, that's fine, as a separate issue that probably warrants. A full, half hour at our next, uh, work session to dig into. Where we stand, what the consultant is doing, looking at the options with Pepco, et cetera. Really what I was hoping to focus this work session item on is Public Safety Officer. And, and obviously, one of the, the functions would be to. One, one, one of the functions would be to. Monitor the status of the streetlights, you know, are they working or not? But not so much the installation of new lights.
That's right. Yeah. And, and actually, that's one of the benefits of using the selection. That Pepco has is that we can continue, especially if we have. Addic, you know, we have the right person in place in this role to do regular monitoring of the streetlights. That we can continue to just report it to Pepco and, and have them replace them.
Perfect.
Could I get that back to you? It's just a question of who's responsible that I'm not absolutely sure about. At the moment. There's a sign when you're turning from Greystone onto Surrey that's supposed to show you that you're turning onto Surrey. It's, it's there, but it's completely buried by a tree and you, you just can't see it.
Okay.
Now, the question is, who is responsible for clearing it? Is it the homeowner or is it the town?
It's a tr- it's a tree, probably the town if it's a tree, it's a town tree.
I'm not sure it is a town tree.
I think it still would be the town's responsibility because. Ostensibly, the town, or the, the sign itself is in the town right of way. So similar to. Once the, once the tree goes on, onto your property, you can cut it back however you want. I think in this instance, the town would be responsible. But right, right now to, right now. I can, I'll, I'll start to put together, and there are a couple of one-off signage issues that I am aware of and. I was trying to do a, a comprehensive. Sign, uh, project and wrap it all into one, but I, I think. I just need to take care of, of these one-off things and take kind of parallel tracks with it and take care of those. I, I, I am in negotiations with, or I shouldn't say negotiations. I am working out with the engineering firm that we hired to do a sign inventory throughout town as well. But there's no need to, to wait on that to get some of this work done that we, we know, so.
What about the sidewalks? Like whose responsibility is the sidewalks? Like what happens with that?
It's the town's also.
The, the town is responsible for the sidewalks. I think that this will be wrapped up in our. One of the things we put in the budget, you might remember is. A, a roadway's master plan. And I, I think. We envisioned that encompassing not just the roads themselves, but the entire. Asphalt and concrete, uh, infrastructure. So the roads, the curbs, the gutters, the sidewalks, everything. Now, now again, there, there are some one-off projects and you referenced the one where. On, on Warwick, there's a, a big dip in the, in the, in the person's driveway. And, um, we did get a, a, a quote to just get that work done. Just waiting to. Get sign up from the neighbor there actually to, to finally schedule the work.
And then like with the street, like the missing street sign, like if you, if you order that, like, does someone come and put it up?
Yeah, yeah, we, we would, yes, yeah, we, we, we would take care of that with one of our, one of our.
Yeah, it would be great to move some of these things kind of forward because they've just been sitting there for a while. And again, you know, if an ambulance comes on Uppingham and Fallstone. I mean, it's a problem. And so. Yeah, I mean, if there's anything that we can do, like as a town council to kind of help move this, some of the stuff forward.
I was just going to recommend that maybe, um, I could chat. With, with you and Kumar, and if there's, you know, one other person from the committee or something and we can. Air our list and then I can, I can just go ahead and take care of that work.
Yeah, because I know, like, you know, there's another thing where, you know, depending on who you talk to, they're going to, they say that. The corner from Deal to, or not, maybe Devon Place to Dorset, or Devon Place to Cumberland, or, you know, one of those little streets has. That has shrubs that are blocking the stop sign and the right of way. And it's hard to see kids that walk right by there and. You know, some of those issues and like to determine, you know, whose issue is that? Is that the town's again? And so we should be out there cutting shrubs or is that the individual homeowners that we need to contact them and say? You need to cut your shrubs.
For, for shrubbery and plantings, that is the homeowners. And I think that was to, to tie it into. What Steve was saying. That's, that's one of the things that I, I think somebody actively in this role would help. And that, that was something that I, I think, um, Council President was. Was help, helping me move in the direction of is not just code enforcement, but this sort of safety aspect of it. Where there, there certainly is overlap there, but, um, making sure that. There is good visibility because they're, they're narrow streets and they're tight corners. So, um, it's important that. And in some cases, people might not be aware even of it. And I, I, I did include it in, in. My article for the Town Journal that's coming out in July, but, um, you know, also just reminders from the town is, is helpful.
This has been a great discussion and I, I'm, I gather that Matt has taken the action to. Uh, work with a couple of council members to identify some. Sort of one-off or standalone priorities to be addressed. Sounds like he's already working on some like that, uh, the dip in the driveway. What I wanted to do here was step back a little bit and look at the, the bigger picture. Because from my perspective. One of the reasons why we're having this discussion is. Matt, Matt can't do it all. And, uh, as folks may recall, he presented a. A new organizational plan as part of our town budget process for this fiscal year. And at the time, the council did not approve it. Um, we were concerned about increasing. Just, just adding manpower, uh, impact on the budget and definition of roles and responsibilities. So. I've been working with Matt and. And Mayor Slaven, also been talking with Kumar Viswani and. What I want to do here is share my idea or vision. Sort of plants, plant the seeds, plant some thoughts, and then we can, uh, discuss it further perhaps at our next work session. And I will welcome feedback either at the meeting here today, tonight, or via email. But basically, what, what I tried to come up with, working with Matt was a. A full-time individual, a new structure that's for the town office with a full-time individual. That can focus on this without increasing. Impact on the town, town budget. And. The proposal or the vision here would be to have a. Full-time public safety officer, an individual who would wear some sort of. Town uniform, who would literally walk the streets of Somerset every day. Who would hopefully become, uh, familiar with, uh, many of our residents. And would be checking on the safety of sidewalks, condition of curves, be the. The eyes and the ears for, uh, the town manager. He would also then be able to, um, follow up on actions or track actions, corrected actions. At the town hall. So he'd have. An officer desk at the town hall. He would also be the compliance. He or she would be the compliance officer. And.
Would he juggle too?
This, this is the vision. But. Um, because. Hopefully we don't have that many compliance issues. And we've been getting by really without any compliance officer, but I'm not sure that's been the, the best interest of the town. So I think it'd be good to have somebody.
Well.
Yes?
And, you know, the other thing is that, you know, we keep talking in our town hall meetings about, you know, making sure that people are. Monitoring their drywells and getting them checked. And, you know, we keep putting like accountability actions in place. In some of the stormwater committee stuff. And.
Yes.
It's no good if no one ever follows up with it. So, you know, how do we keep that track? I think that that would be a good. You know, role for this person as well to follow up on like a lot of these items that we have discussed.
Right, right.
We had the code and, uh, code and code, code enforcement officer, I think it was a. He was on a contract.
Yes.
And he has left and we have money. To replace him in the budget. We approved that, correct, Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not Matt, but.
No, but, uh, because you said we, we didn't approve something. I want to be clear, we did approve. For the replacement of that officer. Although in a contract basis. So we have the money for it. Just, I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
We're not indirectly implying sort of a budget amendment here. What you're really saying is there's money for it. We just need to fill the role, but maybe think about the role more expansively than we have historically.
Yeah, but, but that compliance officer is just a part-time contract position. And Matt, in his, his proposal during the budget session, was looking for a full-time. Town employee.
Yeah.
And. The, the vision I have is to, to, to provide Matt with that full-time employee. And we would use that compliance money to help fund that position. We would use some of our engineering money because we don't need to pay. A professional engineer or something like eighty thousand dollars a year to check all of these business sites. I think we could have our. This public safety officer check the various construction sites on a regular basis. And I don't think we need to use. Fifty-five thousand dollars or more a year for police, some amount of money, but not fifty-five thousand dollars. There's a whole history on the police that we can go into in greater detail. But basically, uh, you, you got to the question of, of the dollars and the time. My idea to fund this full-time position. Would be to. Reallocate funds from three sources, compliance, police and, uh, engineering.
Okay. And is that consistent with your expectations and needs, Matt?
Well, I mean, a- as, as Steve s- said, I, I mean, I, I. I, I thought that there's enough here to bring in another full, full-time person, um, especially if we, if, if we. If we task them with, you know, the, the right combination of things and find the right person. You, you made the joke about juggling. One of the challenges would be finding the right person because that, it, it is wearing a lot of hats. But I think it's. It, it, it could, it's worth, I think, seeing if we can. And if we can't, then. We can adjust as well and, and, and go back to trying to figure out a way to.
Right.
Put these hats on multiple people at smaller, you know, smaller dollar amounts, not all rolled into one and. Giving people more specific and defined roles. But, um, I think there's value in finding one person who. Can also, you know, be a, a rotating part of the, of the bullpen in the, in the office.
Does this mean we should review this job description at the next working session?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
What, well, wait a minute. The, the. So the manager has the right to hire who he wants, right? The, the idea is that, um, you know, within the budget that has been approved. But, but the idea is that if. And, and Matt has advertised for something, has advertised. So if it turns out that he finds a candidate. That. Doesn't fit within the budget, then he will have to present that. Uh, job description and then the council would have to move funds from these other places that. That, that, um, the president's talking about. Yeah. So, um, but the point of having this discussion tonight was to brainstorm and I think everybody. Has given a lot of, uh, good input to Matt. And, and, and then we'll see what happens. But, but, but this is really coming from Matt and not from any of us.
Yeah, that makes sense. And you're basically saying he's going to go and advertise, he's going to hire. If it turns out. It was going to go beyond budget, then he has to come back to the council because that is budgetary.
Yeah, to get the position approved. Yeah, yeah.
And just to clarify, have you already advertised, Matt?
Not yet. No, I haven't. I.
Oh, I thought you said you did advertise for something. No, is that for another position?
No, the, no, I, I, I had been working on the advertisement, but sort of. Had, had put it off to have this conversation. With council.
Well, as, as the pres-
We could almost buy a drone that would fly around all the streets and record the office.
Actually, that was in, you, you, you'd say that jokingly, but that was one of the hot button legal issue question, or. No, 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 one of the, uh, wo- uh, limits of code enforcement, uh. Issues that was brought up in, in that, in that class at MML.
But as the president has, has said, you know, we, when we have our meetings with Matt, we've been, uh, banding this about. But we felt it was important to get input from the council because. It'll give it, it'll give the final decision. Stronger value if there's input from everybody on it because. We're collecting all that.
My, my only, I was joking in part, but my initial, in- initial reaction is that. These are very different roles. It would be hard to find them all in one person. And also, you know, code enforcement. Has a certain orientation. Then other functions where you're cust-, you know, sort of client interfacing, you know, resident interfacing, you might not find the same profile.
That's true.
So just keep that in mind. I, and also I strongly believe that Matt should always be the resident interface. So just keep that.
But, but the bottom, the bottom line is that over the last at least 10 years, you know, we've relied on. Part-time consultants and I think that that has created a lot of dysfunction.
That's a good observe. I appreciate that. I think I appreciate that.
And I think you all realize that and, and, uh, we did it when, when we had Larry Plummer. As a consultant, he, he had a regular schedule and it wasn't full-time, but it was enough. Time so that a lot of the, um, the, um, mission of the. Position was fulfilled, but, but, but now it's not, it's, it's, you know, we were just lucky to have Larry. And now I, I really do think, it sounds like from this discussion that we're going to the. Conclude, we're, we're coming to the conclusion that we really should have. A full-time position similar to Matt's, like Public Works Director or something. And it's not really clear what all the. Job description will be, but I think that we really need a, a, another full-time worker in the office. For, for some of these functions.
Maybe a deputy town manager would be an attractive idol to someone.
May, may, you know, I, you know. It's good they were thinking outside the box. I think that works in in uh friendship heights, for example.
It's good, okay. Great discussion. Did we hear from everyone? Did Debbie, did you?
No, I was just listening. I um. I uh I agree, we need, we need another person in the office. And I would just love for Matt to put together the pieces of it and we support it, actually.
Okay, thank you, good. So the next agenda item is uh vision. Can you um please on that, Matt or Mayor?
Yeah, so um. This came from the uh this was a recommendation request from the uh Equity Inclusion Committee. And um. If. Uh and and Robin, feel free to to jump in and correct, correct any misstatements on on my. On my part, or uh I'm omitting any anything important, but I think that the gist of it was that they would like to to have. Uh to to uh initiate a a town-wide process. Where the town could uh put together e- essentially. Council endorsed and town endorsed visions and value statement for the town on on. Certain certain issues um especially, and I guess particularly related to. Equity equity and and inclusion, and so they 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 set out sort of a a timeline for that over. Seven or so months uh to convene a group that would solicit feedback throughout the town and. Um kinda come up with with these. These statement, vision and uh value statements um. And um. Essentially incorporate that into into the town and. Town communications the same way we have kind of a town logo and um kinda take that next step of um. Vision-based values statement uh for for the town as a whole.
Let's just go around to for thoughts, Robin?
Yeah, right, I mean um. The vision statement is the sort of organizing principle around it all, and the way I think about it is you walk back to the vision statement, so. One example uh I had shared with Steve actually and with Shannon, the fact we discovered that a number of residents um. Run their lead lead pipes from their roofs directly onto their neighbor's lots, so the water never touches resident. We we've, I've I felt instantly, that's wrong. But then the question is, what's wrong about it? Move back, what is it that bothers you about it? And you begin to get back to what is the value there that you're, that is being, you think is being threatened? Similarly, you know, you can look at. The pool committee wants ultimately the pool to be open all year. Why? What 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 value? What value is it? What is their vision? How does that relate to the vision of the town? That 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 would would. Energize us to be able to enable that. Um or, you know, pickleball, you know, again, how does that relate to our vision and value? So the the issue is, all these different themes. Is there a vision that we can use in our town that can guide us to prioritize those themes to translate into values? That's what they're trying to get at. That's what it's about.
Thank you, Robin. Kabir, do you have any thoughts?
Are we doing a website update with this coincide with the website? The when is the website update?
So the communicate, so right now they're. They've sent us draft home homepages and site pages and a site map for us, and I actually had a meeting with. A a small subcommittee of the Communications Committee today to go over. Um the site map organization. Um and then the Communications Committee is meeting a week from tomorrow to discuss as a whole the homepage to. Hopefully finalize feedback and then we'll hopefully have kind of the the final step there um.
Terrifying homepage by committee.
Yeah, yeah.
So that that so mo- so if my thought there is that that would be a great moment to revisit. Sort of a broader vision and sort of maybe tied to that process of updating our public. Sort of um site, and I think it would be interesting to do that. I'm not sure if. This is a process, while I appreciate that it came out of one committee. Should necessarily be driven by one committee, given the inherent sort of idea behind this. And I wonder, it could be really powerful if the chairs of all our committees.
And that's that's in the plan. They they want to involve the chairs of all the committees um and council members too. Yeah, particularly in a round table.
I think that would be great. Um I didn't understand what you meant by. Why we do certain things or why we consider certain things. I don't think there's any confusion there, but I do think that there is value in. In sort of articulating, updating a collective sort of shared value system. Uh I definitely think there's value in that and. Uh it'd be great to sort of tie it with the website process, so it goes somewhere. That would be great to connect it to all our committee chairs because they represent the broader leadership of our town.
You're going to do that. I think that's a great suggestion and good to hear, Robin. Uh Debbie, do you have any comments?
You know, I'm listening to this and, you know, when I read about it before the meeting, I was thinking, oh my god, this is really a tall order. You know, how are we really gonna do this? But I like the idea of this being more the committee chairs. And some council people. And I'm not sure it really belongs coming out of the Equity and Inclusion Committee. I think it's almost its own committee. Um. And and that's just kind of where I am. I think it's its own committee. I hate the idea of another committee, I'm sorry, you know. But um I just, I think it's a pretty tall order and it's gonna take a lot.
Well, they they see themselves as the organizers of it, but they're not. They're not driving the process, they're not, it's not their ideas, they're trying to develop towns' ideas through. Bringing in council members, committee chairs, that's that's.
I'm okay with it. Maybe they are the right people. I'm just, you know, off the top of my head.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's our responsibility as the council to. Engage the community widely to solicit inputs and develop a. A vision that hopefully everyone can sign on to. That might might be wishful thinking, but hopefully. Uh Shannon, do you have some thoughts or comments?
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that that would be good and interesting and, you know, for. The website and um. You know, I mean, it might be nice to have like, you know, kids involved and like what. It means to live here and be a part of Somerset Community and the pool obviously is like. So crucial for that and, you know, stuff like that. So, I mean, I think that, yeah, it could be interesting.
That's a great idea to involve more kids in the.
They 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 had suggested that they they are asking for a representative from Somerset Elementary, actually, although. Not sure that's the best way to involve kids, but.
I think we need older kids. I think we need high schoolers or eighth graders, that kind of, that kind of, I guess, eighth graders are the high schoolers now.
I can I can. Make those comment back to them later this evening, cuz it's an eight o'clock Eve meeting.
Yeah, cuz I mean, you know, obviously, like, we we have a lot of people that live in this town and, you know, people have their own different values that, you know. We don't like, just cuz I live somewhere doesn't mean like I have to subscribe to like, you know, this town's values, but. You know, one of the things that can be nice is to see like, you know, what the town means to different people and the residents that live here and. You know, there's obviously a lot of people that live here for a very long time and their kids grow up here and they wanna live here and. You know, there's all the things that make Somerset um, you know, special to everyone that lives here. Um and so to incorporate kids of all ages and, you know, different parents and different groups because, you know, we. We all are from a wide array of places and nationalities and, you know, all sorts of things, like to say that we have like this one. You know, vision is maybe a little limiting um.
Yeah, I think by definition, this needs to be broadly inclusive effort.
Yeah, right.
Kids of all ages, different background, it would be awesome.
Or like uh the UU church that we went to is like, our our they are like our, what was it? Our mission is that we have no mission or something, and we're like, well, isn't that like a mission?
Unmissioned mission.
Very universalist to me, yes, right, okay.
Well, all right, don't forget our town motto is a pretty good summary of our values.
What is, what is it again, Jeffrey, our town motto? Remind us.
Where people and trees.
Grow together?
Grow, yeah, where people and trees.
Where's the town? It's on the top.
That's pretty powerful.
Journal.
Where people and trees have deep ro- roots and grow strong.
Wrote that, and he's on the Equity and Inclusion Committee, so believe me, he knows it.
He he wants to have been it, basically.
He might want to, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, great feedback and I guess.
And our town anthem has a lot of values in it also.
We can certainly sample that um too.
But but we we do. But I think, you know, I've talked extensively to the chair of the committee over these past months and. O- one of the big issues. That we need to address is the fact that we need to examine whether or not we are a welcoming community for all. And I do not think that that is reflected in any of these items that I've just mentioned.
I see, I see. Well, okay, well, that's a, that helps.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a. We we are somewhat demographically uh. I hate to use the word diverse, but anyway, but we we are not, we are not, um we are not, I don't know that we're welcoming.
So I I appreciate that, Jeffrey. Why why can't then the diversity committee suggest? How we can at a bare minimum update how we describe ourselves to make sure we are indeed.
Well, they they see this as part of their process. I mean, you know, no.
This seems too involved and a bit sort of. I think if they have an idea here, it will be helpful to see it, you know, and. And that could, that could be powerful in its own way.
There there, I mean, their idea is that we need a vision and values associated with it. Uh they're not pushing a particular vision, they aren't. Obviously, the Equity and Inclusion Committee, they have a particular perspective, yes, but for this, they're not pushing a particular line.
But what Jeffrey just said resonates with me, and if they have a vision or ideas on that, that would be great to hear.
I I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure they will fully participate, yes, but they are expected to hear from council members, from all the committee chairs too.
I think they're encouraging a town-wide self-examination.
That's what it sounds like, and do we, that's that, it seems a bit.
In essence, yes, um but it's a, it's a point. Self-examination, aiming at an out, an output from it.
I don't know what other council.
It's very, it's very therapeutic and psychological, you. E- everyone thinks that it's somebody else's problem.
Well, I like then what Shannon.
You get that, you get that, Councilmember Kumar.
I do get that, but I like what Shannon was saying that that something must be working right, that we do have people from all walks of life. Members of this community, so let's not lose sight of that, I think.
Yep. Great discussion. I think the the takeaway of the action here, Robin, is for you to bring some of the, bring this feedback. Uh to the first city Equity Inclusion Committee and um. And then we'll look forward to some. I guess more specific recommendations on how the council can help move things along.
Sure, I'll say this enthusiasm for the idea cuz it sure sounds like it from what I'm listening to, so.
Okay, yes. Right. Okay, um I think we're maybe marginally ahead of time. Uh the last. Item on the agenda I wanna talk about is uh term limits for my my position, president. Uh a town resident. Uh suggested that to me.
I think that you jumped over an item. That has been, that has been delayed and delayed.
Oh, I did, sorry. Draft policy on serving in outside organizations, so we're not really ahead. Go for it, Jeffrey.
You're four minutes ahead.
So we we've been talking about this for many, many months, and I think that we deferred it last month since uh Councilmember Kumar. Was um not available. And in the meantime, um. The town attorney was asked by the council to draft some. Policies. And 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 we can achieve the president's agenda tonight. By just deciding whether you wanna move this forward to the um July fifth meeting, or do you wanna have. Some brainstorming with the town attorney at next month's work session.
And and just to to summarize very quickly what Ron had put in this. He did leave it somewhat broad for 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 us, I I think by design. Um so as not to to handcuff um appointees, but to give some. Guideline uh guidance on um on how they should uh a um. Keep the council informed on actions and activities of whatever organization they're serving on. And provide um reports to the council, and he says that at a frequency required by the town council, but. No less than um. Equal to how often that organization meets. So in other words, you know, if the, if that organization meets quarterly. The representative should at least be giving the council a quarterly update on these, these are the issues that we're working on. And then the other is that um the appointee. Shall confer with the council prior to an important vote, essentially, um to. To, I think that was something that Mayor Slaven had had mentioned to. Uh right now, there's no mechanism to really ensure that an appointee is uh. Is voting along with the interests of the town, um and so this this sort of.
Not the town, the town.
Yes, yes.
And and let's also give credit where credit is due. This this uh broad item was inspired by the Public Safety Committee. In their effort to clarify the role of the um. Council approved appointee to the Bethesda Fire Department and the. The um council member condos testified recently that it would, that she would appreciate some guidance. And I think all of the the people that we um. Designate to represent either me or the council and outside organizations would appreciate some. Policies to guide them in their work.
You you know, the on- the only thing, if if I I'm I'm sorry to, I I don't mean to jump in front of. Um any any council members' comments, but uh just quickly to say. The only thing that jumped out to me that I haven't had a chance to talk with Ron about and maybe doesn't belong in this is that. We currently don't have any mechanism for the council to basically strip. Appointment if if somebody were to be negligent in their duties and um. Whether that's part of this, you know, of course, generally speaking, we we have very committed residents who. Um do a great job um in their appointments and town council members, et cetera, but um. If under some circumstances, um it it may be worth including something like that, either in this policy or. Um or otherwise.
Good point.
But that could be brought up when when it's considered at the July council meeting.
Right, one other thought you might. Want to clarify how people report it to the council. Um. Some of the committees meet once a month, and I can't imagine someone coming to council and telling them every month what happened at committee meeting. So is there, you know, is a written note to the council sufficient?
Right, it doesn't have to be that they get um time on it, on an agenda, because that would be a waste of time.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. So I like the idea of getting something in place, I think. Yeah, thank you, Ron. Um, so I like the idea of getting something in place. I think this is great. Um, I'm ready to put it on the agenda for us to vote on it. And if we need to modify it or improve it in the future, we can do so. That's my thought.
Uh and also, I don't know if this is all in there, but I mean, even just like a note summary that after each meeting or, you know, that they don't have to come and speak to anyone, but that we could email out to the appropriate people, like, you know, that are kind of stakeholders in this thing, like the Bethesda Fire Department notes would go to the Public Safety Committee and, you know, whoever else wants them. I mean, these should be public notes for our for our town.
Well, also that you we could require the rap, we could require the rap to submit the minutes of the meeting to the town manager. And then he could distribute it wherever he would. The same with the with the uh poorly run Coordinating Committee on Friendship Heights.
Oh, that's not so bad. I don't think that's so bad.
It would be much better if you become the chair of it.
I don't think that will ever happen. Um, but um, no, I.
Over my dead body was that? Yes, okay.
No, I I I just, I don't think that's fair, Jeffrey. I think they some of these people.
Let's discuss that offline.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I think for for everyone except for Kabir on on this topic.
I'm I'm definitely in favor of doing this. And he's suggested changes like Matt's suggestion and Shannon's suggestion for the reporting by email. It makes a lot.
So we'll move forward with this. I think that some of this, some of the suggestions that have been made, we can provide as direction um direction to the liaison serving on these organizations in addition to the written policy.
One request, when this comes up in the next meeting, could we have a list of all the committees and external organizations that currently you know, either have some representation from the tower or where we intend to have somewhere?
That's that's a great, great request, Kabir. Matt, can you pull that together?
Yeah, I'll work with um I'll work with Mayor Slaven uh on that and make sure that we have a list accompanying this this item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh if there's something else on that agenda item, the last item is the term limit. Apologies for jumping ahead before. Um, his in in my limited time on the council, the council president position seems to have been given, not given to, been voted on for and stayed with the individual that had the most years on the council. And um I'm just, I'm not sure that's the healthiest way to go. I think it's great to get different perspectives. Um, I'm I'm leaning towards maybe just on a personal basis, stepping down as president after this this term. So I would have been president for two years and then and then create an opportunity for someone else and not necessarily the next person with the next most years of experience. I'm I'm not sure that we need to have some sort of formal uh change to our to our charter on on a term limit, but I just heard if if any folks even care about this issue or have any thoughts. And uh.
Well, one other option also is perhaps uh consider the the way the county council does it, which is I think they they it says that they rotate it, doesn't it? I don't know what the language is. I don't think they say term limit. I think they say rotate. So that's something else you might want to consider. I I don't I don't know. And you might want to think about it for committee chairs.
I was going to say committee chairs also. Yeah, it's the other thing to think about. Because some committees are thriving on their second or third chair. Other committees kind of fall with a chair who is not really um running the committee well. And term limits can actually help there.
So another another thing, as you're building the bench for future council members, if you have a rotation of committee chairs, then you would get individuals that would might serve as chairs of two or three different committees so that they would then have a lot of experience in different areas if they ever ran for the council, for example.
I like the idea of calling it rotating it, you know, not saying term limits, but that it rotates. I would like to, I think if we tried that for a period of time, see how it worked, we can always go have term limits. We can always institute that and make it kind of in the code, but we if we.
Are you thinking of like ro- rotating every month or every three months?
Every several years.
Every few weeks.
Yeah.
Let me point something out. Um, when I got elected to the council 20 years ago, I believe there was term limit on the pool committee.
Really?
And when the council rewrote the code uh five years ago, all of those limits were taken out. I just want to give you that historic perspective. So there is a history of the town having term limits.
Why'd they take them out?
I think the I think because they thought, Robin, weren't you there? I mean, I think people thought.
Find members is part of the problem.
What's that, Robin?
Hard to find a member.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's why.
Then you have a caveat. If you can't find somebody, then the person can do it, you know. I I think that's how you do it. But I think what's wrong is that if you don't have some sort of rotating thing, these these positions that can become like dynasties, you know, on our committees.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think the chair's position is the one that is the most relevant one there rather than individual committee members, but if we can.
There was term limits for, yeah, it was term limits for all committee members. So so um you, as you all know, what I try to do when I nominate to committees is that I try to, you know, pass the 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 uh opportunities around. And that's another reason why you would might want to consider rotation for committee chairs so that others have leadership opportunities. More people have leadership opportunities.
Sure. I agree. All right. Can I just one, can I just throw something in that maybe we can talk about it at another meeting? I'd really like to talk about Zoom etiquette, especially as we go into we're in person and we have zoomers, you know, maybe on the big screen. So I would maybe next month, if we could put that in, I I have some, there are some things, I've been thinking a lot about Zoom etiquette because being on other committees. So I wonder if we could just put that on your list.
Great idea. Well, Matt and I'll make sure it's on the the next agenda, next work session.
Also, um, I can probably ask this offline, but um so for the tennis committee, they want to add in um a new member to the committee. Can we put that on the consent agenda for the meeting?
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute. That that doesn't, did somebody resign?
Yeah, Elizabeth Williams or something is moving back to Australia and they want Mary Ellen Dock or I don't know her name. I'm sorry.
My neighbor.
Okay, well, we'll figure that, we'll figure that out. We'll figure that, we'll figure that out.
There's been a lot of emails and then Carrie brought it to my attention. I didn't have a chance to get it on the work session.
Mary would be good.
Okay, well, anyway, that 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 doesn't, that's not a part of this um, that doesn't go through the work session. But we'll work. But thanks for letting me know.
The one thing I would add to this is that we we this council would have more credibility with the committees on term limits if we impose them on ourselves.
Yeah.
In mind, either at the, you know, council president level, but also on the council terms.
I think two years is enough.
I know, no, no.
Debbie's like, I agree. I am out of here.
I I don't, I you know, if you do term limits on council mayor, you you're not going to find any.
They're going to run out of council members.
You need to do it on the mayor, but I definitely think on the.
Oh, well, we absolutely need to do it as mayor, yeah.
Yeah, it should be for everybody.
Also, I'm just saying, you know, talking about committee dynasties.
I mean, I've been working on Debbie to uh so I can resign and Debbie can become the mayor.
No, no, thank you, but thank you.
That would be enlightened. It would be nice to have a female mayor. I'm all for it.
I I'm, you know, I don't want to mention any other names on who's I've been talking to, but anyway, um.
And and Kabir, I think you make a great point that um if if there's any sort of uh policy change we want to make to the committee structure, uh committee rules, we should impose them on ourselves too. Yeah. Um, this is just in intended to start the discussion. Appreciate the feedback and uh we will make this and and I'd like to continue the discussion at our next uh work session. And that sound like a boat to close the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
I second it. Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Take care.